Good afternoon, going on college work session to order. I want to ask, uh, if I'm doing the job, thank you be so kind to go ahead and approach.
Dear Father, Lord God, we just thank you. Lord God, we thank you for this beautiful day in the land of the living. Lord God, we thank you for being God and not all might or sin. Lord God, we thank you for being omnipotent and unrepresent. Lord God, we thank you for being the king of kings and the lord of lords. Lord God, we thank you for being our saving and our saving. Lord God, we take time to give your name the praise and glory and honor that it should. Lord God, we submit ourselves to you. We accept your work through us and in us to accomplish your will and do as among. We bind our minds to the mind of Christ. We bind our wheels to your wheel, Lord God. We accept your work in us and through us only to accomplish your will in this city. In Jesus' holy presence and righteous name we pray.
Amen, amen. Um, to the social request, cell phone, uh, high athletic department. Once we're off, I'm gonna go ahead and let you a lot come on up. Cause I know you have to get to the quarterback, come on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ma'am? I'm going quarterback, but. Uh, in front of you, you have a memo from me, a brief, uh, update on our grants project, uh, which is part of a $450,000 adductor grant we got. We opened bids on September twenty-fourth. There were four contractors that took out a set of bid documents, which those are the documents they use to prepare their bid. Only one submitted a bid, and I think that's kind of a sign of times, construction industry. They're pretty busy these days, uh, and it is what it is. Anyway, Swedman Brothers Construction, local contractor, submitted the low bid of five-eleven, two-oh-two-thirty. In talking with the Alabama Tom Bigby Regional Commission, which prepared the grant application and is administering the project, you've got $400,370 budgeted for construction. So that means as with the low bid, you were, the bids were one-ten, hundred-and-ten-thousand, eight-thirty-two-thirty, over the budget to the amount. Now, we looked at a couple of options, and I discussed this with Henry Thompson. He was gonna be here tonight, but he called me late this afternoon, said he was not gonna make it, so I'm the guy right here, y'all can shoot books at, but he won't. I just, uh, I've talked to him several times, also talked to the staff at Alabama Tom Bigby. You can do two things. One, you can re-advertize and rebid the project and hope you get more than one bidder and hope you get a lower price. I have no way of knowing if that will happen or not. However, y'all won't do that, you need to be aware that that takes time. And we're under a time crunch to try and have the project completed and closed out by March thirty-first of next year. That's an absolute deadline imposed by adductor. If you don't get everything done by then, you're not eligible to apply for another $450,000 next year. You gotta wait a whole other year. And when I say closed out, you have to hold, you have to advertise for public hearing, hold a public hearing, and so we have to finish construction usually by about middle of February, if not the first of February. The second option would be to see if we could meet with the contractor, see if he could lower any of his unit prices, and also we, as your engineer, would perform a value engineering analysis, and I say we, that's Meredith and I, we're both engineers. And we did both things. The contractor agreed to a one-bid item to lower his unit price. Uh, that was moving in to this twenty-seven thousand here. He can give his price from a thousand dollars to, uh, five-hundred dollars each, which saves us thirteen thousand, five-hundred dollars. Another item we looked at on the value engineering is select backfill, and that's when we, when the contractor excavates, backfills the pipe, and materials not suitable. Uh, we've only got one area really that we think the soil's gonna be kinda bad, and that's on primrose. Uh, based on the last project we finished last year, CDBG project, we only used eight-hundred cubic yards, I had budgeted, uh, two thousand, so I lowered my estimate to a thousand, and that would save us twelve thousand dollars. And we looked at little things in each of the eight areas, and I think this, everybody, Susan and Carl, you have a little bit in your board. You have Saint Anne Street, Councilman Shaw was mentoring, and Bogomong with King is Jackson, is, uh, Hartman, and Councilwoman Thomas is, uh, Uden's. Anyway, looked at all those areas. We could not change the project or cut any of them out, because you've got to, you've got to keep the same beneficiaries that you submitted in your application. So all we did was maybe change a couple of things, move an inlet, maybe eliminate a junction box where we could, we could do it a little bit better than we originally set up. The bottom line, we came down to where we can do the project for four-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand, seven-eighty-eight-eight, which puts us thirty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars above what we had budgeted. And, and what I recommend to the council is that you find the money, uh, in this year's budget, uh, to do that. And it's also eligible under the gasoline tax fund, since it's draining under the streets. So you, you could do it from there. You've all, you mass your forty-five thousand, that was in last year's budget. That was the ten percent but max required by adductor. This is an additional thirty-eight, four-hundred-and-eighteen-eight.
That's good. Here from the engineer, and, and of course, we had four contractors too, that was given packages, but only one submitted, and that's the local company. And also the cost of overrun, I think we can take that thirty-eight thousand dollars gasoline tax, and let's move forward with this grant. But if we don't do that, as the engineer said, if we put ourselves in a harm's way, then we may not be able to meet the deadline, or we're unable to submit a financial grant. So I think, uh, the study has been done, contract has been let, and, and of course, we've only received one, and it's a local contractor, and that would be my recommendation.
Alright, thank you. Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I compare what, um, Mr. Councilor shares there. Um, we, uh, have, if I don't have to tell anybody, from our infrastructure we have, whatever we can do, whenever we can do with infrastructure, we need to, um, we're standing in the, you know, in the next few years, being able to, to get some business concerns, and we have some real possibilities coming down the park with some of the opportunities on and some of the people that we have interested in Selma. But the bottom line, the foundation for everything is our infrastructure. I don't know how we can't do this.
Mr. President, so this is a special call meeting, it's an order that I.
Oh, it's not a special call meeting yet. It's just, we even worked this.
A voice issue. Special call meetings are fine.
Yeah, we're gonna call it.
Can we put this up for a vote, real special call meeting?
Okay, hold on, hold on, we'll go ahead and call, go ahead, check with, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, who is real call.
And, um, he's right, because, uh, some of the areas, uh, we really do need it over in Miami.
I guess what we need to do, uh, put a call, special call meeting, talk about it. Got a motion to go ahead and. Real call number four.
President Booing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin? Councilwoman Randolph? Councilwoman Schorr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Thirty-four, therefore, nineteen-nineteen.
My motion is to accept the recommendation of both coming from the engineer, and we move forward with the grant application, and we take the thirty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand, fifty cent out of Councilwoman.
I said that.
We have the motion for, Councilwoman Schorr, second by Councilwoman Youngler, in a party discussion, real call.
President Booing? Councilwoman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin? Councilwoman Randolph? Councilwoman Schorr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Anything else, Miss Al?
That's alright.
Alright, we're gonna bring Chief, uh, Chief Green up, and then, uh, we're gonna come back to the seven-nine.
Right, right. Who am I calling? You know, that's part of, we don't have to go, we don't have to talk. I need to thank the citizens, the.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chief.
To the President, members of the council, I have one agenda item. I have yet another canine that needs to be taken out of service, canine Ashtar, he's our oldest canine, I have his medical examination report attached, the memorandum that you should have, and, uh, he's nine years old, he's no longer able to physically perform his duties as canine.
I know we can use it for this here resolution. Uh, this lady's number, uh, last number, head resolution, hold on.
Um, we're seeing this answer, is he here?
Yes, ma'am.
This will be one-forty-nine.
One, this will be one-forty-nine?
One-forty-nine.
Alright, one-forty-nine, that's eighteen, nineteen. Alright, still have a motion for, that's resolution one-forty-nine, that's eighteen, nineteen, we will have the resolution four, but this is the resolution number, we'll come back for it, yes, ma'am.
We're doing the resolution four?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going today?
We're gonna go ahead and vote today, but I have a resolution number, one-forty-nine, eighteen, I know the term might be, uh, tomorrow, so I have a motion on the field, by council, you know. Uh, Schorr, second by councilwoman, councilwoman Thomas, in a party discussion?
It's, it's, yes, Father, this is the retirement.
Yeah, retirement, yeah, but I will come back to the resolution, we'll come back to you. Real call.
President Booing?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph? Councilwoman Schorr?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion was in there. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
I'll ask Doctor Wade, please come up with the, after the department, then we're gonna move forward to the head of the session, back up.
Okay, good afternoon, Mrs. Warren.
I can't tell in this office, but, good afternoon, y'all can hear me right, good afternoon. Uh, thank you all for having us. Uh, I'm gonna actually pitch it to our team. I've got, uh, Coach Turner, our athletic director, and Coach Gandy, our head football coach, and just wanna talk to you, um, a little more about supporting our athletics. I've, uh, broached this topic a couple of times, and just wanted to, um, address it again, and see if you all had any specific questions from our, um, coaches.
Alright, good evening, again, Coach Katasha Turner, athletic director, Selma City Schools. Um, and so we're just here to, again, uh, run for the, I guess, the information about the football, um, and lining the field, and making sure that that is done correctly, um, and what we need to do to make sure that it's paid for, um, and for your assistance to help with that financial issue.
On the last, uh, council meeting we had, uh, I brought up, I talked to Dr. Wade, and the issue was about, uh, the guys coming to the field, the stadium, I think it was their picking grass, uh, the cleaning of the bleachers, they was, uh, cleaning the restrooms, and I think inside and outside as well. Um, and when I was talking, uh, to Mr. Van Diver, I think what we, we were saying that we're just, um, kinda like wondering if we charged a rent on the stadium this particular year, and I just wanted to make sure that that was the case when I asked Dr. Wade, and she said, yes, that the guys were gonna be cleaning and everything, and, um, and that way it was like waiving the fees for you all on behalf of that. Uh, but I'm not really sure how we need to do it, uh, uh, I thought we was clear with that, but, um, again, I just, I'm not sure, uh, we still in special call meetings, I'm not sure that we, uh, can we go ahead and move forward with that, until we got our workers back, our workers are not there, and, and, and some of our football team, and I'm pretty sure.
And the track, and, and the track or field, when we have track, which starts in the, um, spring, you know, we have in the past, I know last year we did make sure that, um, the track and everything was clean.
Okay, right, now, we speaking of this year, we not talking of last year, and, uh, I'm not sure with Wade, I, you know, myself personally, uh, for that reason, we don't have our workers there to do this, and it's impossible for two guys to do all that themselves. I'd like to make a motion to waive the fees for them for the remainder of this year, unless our workers come back, then there can be some changes, but meanwhile, but now I'm not sure what other option we need to do, you know, because they are gonna work in the field and stadium for that.
I, I wanna go back, did you say that, um?
Speaking of, uh, this year.
I'm speaking of this year.
Right.
Did you say Mr. Van Diver has already done this on his?
No, no, he mentioned, he mentioned to me that, uh, I think they might came before us, or came, not before the mayor, and I think the, uh, uh, Mr. Van Diver, that, um, and they asked about waiving the fees, I think yesterday they said that it was waived, so I don't think it came before the council, that's why I'm now.
Indeed, that's why I'm hurrying it up, because I don't know if you were still here or not, Mr. Van Diver, um, took it upon himself, and I guess someone else helped him do that with no authority, to, uh, waive the fees already, and you're bringing a motion for something that has already been done? What, what is it that you're bringing before the council?
Well, right now, I think, uh, on the.
Because Van Diver has no authority.
Right, and on the last, uh, uh, meeting, I think we, we talked to Dr. Wade, she came before and I asked her any question, and, uh, and, uh, it's good that you talked to Van Diver, and you are right, uh, that the fees was waived, and, uh, and I asked him, was the students were doing, uh, the things that I heard that was going, like doing the cleaning, the grass cutting and everything, and Dr. Wade would say, yes, they were doing it, so the athletic director as well telling me, and I see that, uh, the games is going on, uh, uh, you know, so a battle in the fields, and, uh, the restroom is getting done, you know, so and I know we, our guys, you know, our guys are not there, you know, uh, so, but, uh, it's just, and I'm just one man.
So, so, since I had to go.
Okay.
Coach Turner, let me tell you this, cause I love you, and because I don't want you to get caught in some crossfire that you don't know anything about. Um, the only authority that has, the only body that has the authority to waive fees for our home stadium is this panel up here. Mr. Van Diver can't do it, the mayor can't do it, not anyone else can do it, and I don't want the, you as the brand-new AD to get caught up in that crossfire right there. Uh, I don't think anybody would have been adverse to it at all, but what has happened is someone has taken it upon themselves to do this, and to make it happen without a vote of the body, which has caused a lot of conversation that you don't even know back. It's caused a lot of background conversation that you don't even know of that. And so, um, that's what I'm wondering, what is coming before the council, because this is already.
Right, what I'm asking now, is that's what I'm bringing before the council now, uh, unless there's other plans, that we can go ahead and move forward with this to go ahead and waive the fees, they can continue on doing what they're doing until we get our workers back in place, you know, cause that's a lot of work trying to clean that stadium, and the bathrooms and everything, it's a hard machine. Uh, but right now, um, I'd like to go ahead and move forward with it, now if you can vote it up or vote it down, uh, to go ahead and move forward to, uh, to, uh, uh, waive the fees for the remainder of the year. How many games y'all got left?
Uh, we have one more game with the middle school has a game tomorrow, and the field has, we have to try to line appeal tonight, um, but we don't have anybody.
So y'all don't have no more home games after this, is the home games, is it both?
We have, the middle school has their home game tomorrow, which the field has not been lined, but they have, you know, we got the final match, which I'll be there, and, you know, again, fun, they're limited for us, and then, uh, November is our senior night.
So that's, that's, we got two games left remaining.
And, but we're also.
But it's a possibility of playoffs.
We're playing.
Oh, okay.
Cause we are, and so we got a possibility about playoffs too, so.
And finally, Mr. President, um, I don't think, uh, the, the majority of this body is adverse to that, but be mindful of what the protocol is, so you won't get in, get caught up in this whole political thing, that you will have no idea what's going on, and then you'll be in the middle of, at the brand-new AD, and we want you to do good, and we want you to do well, but the standard protocol is to come before the council, and now it has caused conflict and confusion.
Councilwoman Thomas, and Councilwoman Schorr, and Councilwoman.
And, uh, I like to say this to you, Coach, uh, we, we support everything that the school does, but, uh, you know, sometimes we get surprised with things that are happening, and, we have, uh, committees, uh, deal with different, that falls under, and, you know, we work, we believe in work leadership, being working together, and, you know, you know how we are about school, we stand in school, we believe in doing things, and I feel someone that you know, I think, from now on, if you want to, want the leadership to, to back y'all and do things, try to find out before someone else makes a decision.
Alright, Councilwoman.
I was gonna say, Jeff, Mr. President, that he, that he should not hold, uh, the, the school responsible for whatever shortcomings or protocols that exist here in the city, and I concur with Councilman Johnson, let's go ahead and do whatever necessary to help our children, and I think you have a motion on the floor, Mr. Johnson.
Can I just add one statement in response, um, with, to both of your comments? Um, I've been coming before the council on a monthly basis, and I presented a letter the last time that I was here with this request, so this request is not a new request coming from our athletic director. Uh, this is a follow-up to that request.
Just happily voting off.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, don't, I mean, it's not something that she's trying to push through without going through the proper channels, because I came here to address the body to go through the proper channels, and presented a letter, um, from the district, so.
And since you're pressing us, um, it is not even about Coach Turner, it's, it's about Mr. Van Diver, the fee that he has no business dealing with. It's, it's not about her, we love her, we know what she's doing over there. It is about someone giving an authority to do something who has no authority or right to do so, and when some of the council members were surprised by it, they shocked by it, as it was reported, uh, not by, by Mr. Van Diver himself, then it caused conflict and confusion.
So we don't know anything about that, is what I'm saying.
And, and it goes back, that goes back to my statement.
We haven't communicated with this.
That goes back to my statement, you don't want to.
Alright, you know, check yourself, go ahead, somebody still saying, oh, what?
That's not, I had a.
Go ahead, send this along.
This is what I mean.
Let me apologize for this, uh, this abomination that exists, though. As I was saying, we cannot hold the school responsible for whatever shortcomings that falls under the city, we should do whatever necessary to, to support our, our schools and our children. Once again, Councilman Johnson, go ahead and put your motion on.
Yeah, I will do it.
I'll do it. Give it a second.
Hold on, okay, Councilwoman, I'm gonna let you.
Discussion.
Discussion. Councilwoman. Jackson, then Councilwoman Benjamin, then a couple of votes.
Uh, just Turner, Dr. Wade, so let me make sure that I understand you correctly, because we're talking about two things that may be the same, but may not be the same. So when you came the last time, I thought you were asking for us to, um, actually line or give you funding to line the fields. Okay, and so we're, we're asking for that, but we're also talking about waiving the fees. So are you saying waive the fees, and we're going to use the funding from the waived fees to line the field, or are you asking waive fees and line fees? So help me understand this.
So the, the fees being waived, I, I thought that was a null issue, simply because we're maintaining the fields. Um, you know, our athletes have been spending time cleaning, and, and our maintenance crew has been maintaining the fields, so the, the fee for the field, or for the usage itself, um, I looked at that as a null issue, because we were already doing the maintenance piece, so this was about, uh, supporting in terms of lining the field.
So you're here for lining the fields?
That's, the thirty-two-hundred that I spoke about last time, that's what that was for.
Okay, and so we're, we're voting to waive fees?
We are, we already approved it thirty-two.
Right.
Approved it.
Yes, you are correct, Councilwoman. So we're voting to waive fees? Which is, wait, hold on, which is a new request that you're coming before the council tonight, because you said, what I thought I heard was this is not a new request, the thirty-two-hundred, the lining of the fields is not a new request.
Right.
The waiving of the fees is actually a new request, and what you perceived was not a new request, because you've been doing the work, but it didn't come through properly.
It's a new request.
But, but, I, I guess what you're saying is, I did not know we needed to request that, because we've been doing the work, and we've not charged you a bit for it.
Since it's a fantastic.
Go ahead, Council. I know there's a motion on the floor, and I want to do whatever I can to support this, however, I want to make sure that legally, we can go back and retroactively say, um, when we have someone that, um, doesn't work for the city, it's not budgeted in this, in the city budget, that has made a decision, and now the council is going to act on that decision, I'm not comfortable. Um, made the decision to waive fees, and, um, so we. This, this, okay. Now it comes before the council to not go back and retroactively, cause current, currently you haven't paid fees today, and you only have two games left.
Right.
And so now we have to retroactively say, sure, we don't want this to happen, which we should have done this proactively back in July, sometimes say, hey, we don't want to do this, thank you for maintaining our fields, which you shouldn't have to, or we could have said, actually, we're gonna contract someone to get that done.
Right.
But neither occurred, but we now have to go back retroactively. I would ask that, um, we table it, at least we can give, and, a fee, I mean, we can retro, if we, they haven't paid the fee yet, and we can retroactively say it happened, then we can tell that we're legally in balance, uh, with, with actively. So, uh, I mean, we're not too far to, to tomorrow, we have a coun, council meeting tomorrow, the special call meeting, I thought, um, they were here for the work session agenda, and we'll be actually, the special call meeting was for us to go into executive session, so if we're going to handle it as we thought it was, this is a work session, you couldn't vote it on today anyway, and so I would ask respectfully, um, for the motion to be tabled into tomorrow, give us an opportunity to look at it, and then Attorney General, Public Examiner, so legal ministers have to sell us, move forward, then, of course.
I thought it was a special call meeting.
But this is on a work session agenda.
No, but.
This is not a special.
No, that's, uh.
We're in special call meeting.
I thought it was a special call meeting, that we, the person said it was a special call meeting, and that we can vote on that, uh, but I still have to go back to the time also, uh, Councilwoman, uh, 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 that the days that they sweated grind out there at the stadium, uh, to get the stadium prepared for game one, um, you know, I, I guess some counter, somewhere down the line, that the ball was dropped, uh, when I got it, but on the same token, um, uh, the games had been played, we can't keep taping, every time we're looking, we're taping everything, we need to move forward, get our city's track and track, uh, and right now, I can literally think, they got two games left, we go down and waive this, they're gonna go down and, and, um, uh, continue on cleaning the stadium, doing the restrooms and everything else, um, this two game, possibly maybe three or four games, and I pray it ought to be four or five games, we, we need to stay champion.
Absolutely.
Um, so, but whatever it takes, you know, we need to go and wrap this up, and, um, I'm hoping that we can go ahead and, uh, uh, just vote it up and down, you know, but I like to move forward, and I made a motion.
Okay, and I think the statement is in board. Councilwoman Johnson, please, please understand, please understand the issue, and I know you do, we're, we're not adverse to waiving the fees, this is a different thing, we're not adverse to that, and I think you understand what, what has happened here with the presentation that was given to us, uh, last week, a lot of paper coming around, y'all, um, not adverse to that at all, and, um, I, I feel like it was passed, Dr. Wade, um, in our meeting, in our council meeting, um, we were coming to special call meeting, as Councilwoman has, has said, to go into executive session, and then go into work sessions, and we thought y'all were in the work session, and we were gonna vote tomorrow, we thought all those things, uh, were going to happen, because I gotta bring up your parade thing, because I think, um, you all were unfairly charged, and I thought, I thought I was gonna talk about that in a work session, and then, uh, offered the vote for tomorrow, um, so, yeah. It's, it's not even, it's, it's not even about.
I will remove my motion, if we're gonna deal with some tomorrow, I don't wanna keep on taping stuff, if we tape stuff, we can. Okay, cause I, I will remove the motion, long we move forward, and, uh, and, and I will just, yeah, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if y'all, if y'all, um, well, I know you got things, but, turns to the doctor agent, y'all, get around the work session, but I just, I did want to bring that.
Oh, Ms. Johnson. Then I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go forward, forward to the, to the first, come forward, Ms. Johnson.
Come forward, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, she says, I face your call for today.
Oh, okay.
Today, though.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us to be here today. We're here representing the Lupus Foundation of America, the local chapter, and we are here soliciting funds. This will be the first time that Selma is having an official walk and we are here soliciting funds for you and we thought the meeting, the planning meeting started at five-thirty, so the official chapter representatives, I guess, will be walking in shortly, but I am Carlyn Johnson and Mr. Lawrence is here representing our chapter. Lupus is a mysterious and misunderstood autoimmune disease that strikes without warning, affects each person differently and has no known causes or cures. Lupus symptoms can be severe and highly unpredictable and can cause damage to any organ or tissue from the skin or joints to the heart or kidneys. While lupus can strike anyone anytime, ninety percent of people living with lupus are women. Women of color are especially at high risk. Only one drug, and that has been within the last seven years, has ever been developed and approved by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration specifically to treat the disease and I have been on that drug since it has been administered. The drug is very expensive and if you do not have insurance, you cannot afford it. Imagine a day when doctors can say, there is a cure for lupus. Until that day, there is a lot of work to be done. That's why we are taking action. Join us as we participate in this first initial walk here in Selma. We're asking you, our city of Selma, to raise critical funds needed for the estimated around the world one point five million people living with lupus in the United States. Will you all make a donation to help us reach our goal and support the foundation's efforts to improve the quality of life for all people affected by lupus? Together, we can solve the cruel mystery of lupus. Thank you for your consideration. Are there any questions you have received in your, that is the packet of information and it outlines anything, but if there are any questions, I'll try to answer anything that you might have.
Councilwoman Johnson.
I have to call you Ms. Johnson today. This is my classmate from the class of nineteen-hundred-and-eighty-seven, from Selma High School. Call ahead, there I went. Ms. Johnson, thank you for, all of you, for putting this together, the first lupus walk. We don't talk about this, I know we wear pink in October. I wear pink and purple in October and it's because of you that I am aware. I met a person when I was in college, I met a person that had lupus, she was fine one day and then the next day, it seemed that something had attacked her suddenly and her entire skin was covered with lesions. And I know that you suffer slightly from lupus and sometimes you have your days and I'm glad that you can make it on today, so thank you for putting this together. I want to be in this walk, so I gotta make sure my, my calendar is clear. I want to make sure that I walk in your very first lupus walk in Selma, Alabama, so that we can put a little, a little drop in the bucket of, I don't know what the national goal is and I don't know if Selma has a goal, a fundraising goal, but certainly we can put a drop in that bucket, so thank you, Selma.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you. Do you mind sharing, when you have a flare of what happens, do you mind sharing what happens?
Well, first of all, let me say that no two people are alike, because it's such a mysterious illness. It's not like any other illness.
And they're systemic and then they're...
Systemic, there is, systemic, there is cutaneous, there is the skin, there's neonatal, so there's nothing alike, but when you have a flare, you can't go in the sun, it might attack your joints, might attack your heart, might attack your kidneys, it's invisible. So, we look fine on the outside, but it is doing damage on the inside, it is ravaging your body on the inside, it's tearing you up on the inside. So, we look fine and that's the thing that people don't understand, they think that you're normal, they think you're fine, they think that you're making things up, even doctors don't take you seriously. Sometimes it takes up to, for most people, it might take up to, on average, six to eight years to get a diagnosis, a concise diagnosis, because it mimics so many other things. I was in Florida when I got my diagnosis, I was actually in the hospital for almost two weeks before they actually found out what was going on and I had been suffering probably years before they ever started narrowing down things, but that particular time I was in the hospital for two years and I have been diagnosed now almost eighteen years. And the reason I am back in Selma is because of this illness. My parents were ripping and running, my support system were ripping and running up and down the highway and it just got to be too much, so I had to give up my professional career because of this illness.
May I say something? I'm Delores Smith, I'm also resident of Selma. I was diagnosed right here in Selma. I'm a lupus survivor by, and I don't mind sharing, by a physician here, Dr. Tisdale, the skin doctor, there was a person that diagnosed me and I have good days and bad days, but I press on, I press on in the name of Jesus. As a matter of fact, this morning I had a flare of where your muscles just feel really, really bad, it attacks your body and it seems like you might have, if you know what it feels like to have a flu, that's how bad. But my husband said this morning, he said, I thought you was on rest. He dozed off to sleep, I got up, got myself dressed and I pressed to work, so, and, and as the day went and progressed, I felt better. Of course, I had to take something to help me with the pain, but I, we just don't give up. You have to be a fighter and in Jesus' name, we keep going.
Thank y'all, thanks for sharing.
Y'all look, you can do this very...
I will, I will do it.
I want to suggest is there are two, three, four, five levels of sponsorship. I would pray that the council at least be civil, civil sponsor, that amount of money that I think I, I'm, I'm stretching there.
I think if we, I'm giving one thousand dollars, we can give that. I will, I will. 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 I will.